All right, welcome everybody to the October 10th meeting of the Pennfield Planning Board. Or would you please call the roll?
Heskey.
Here.
Bastian.
Here.
Bad timing on that one.
Knower.
Here.
Burton.
Here.
Nurse singer.
Here.
Saintster.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
White Shire.
Here.
Right.
We have two sets of minutes, one came in late. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to review. So why don't we start with the work session?
September 12th?
Uh, no. Uh, start with the 26th, then we'll go to the 12th. So anybody want to move to?
Move to a group.
Okay.
Second.
So Bastian and Knower. This is the 26th.
Um, Heskey.
Hi.
Bastian.
Hi.
Burton.
Hi.
Knower.
Hi.
All right, now the 26th.
Second.
Same, same deal.
Heskey.
Hi.
Bastian.
Hi.
Burton.
Hi.
Knower.
Hi.
Okay, Zach, you want to go through our tabled items?
I'd love to, and thank you all, sorry for the timing on those minutes, we got them in late running. But obviously, a lot of content there. Moving on to our tabled applications, there are only two listed for this evening. Uh, the first is a very quick update regarding the Heritage Christian Daycare. They have retained legal counsel regarding the applications that have been before the town, specifically that of the zoning board, and they have requested in a formal letter to us from their counsel that they just would ask to be a held item by this board while they review and get caught up on what took place with those other applications until our November meeting.
Do we need a vote on that, or just direction?
It would be a vote to table it and move it to a held item.
So moved. Start like him.
Yeah, that was Bastian.
Bastian again.
Yeah, Bob obviously is getting a little slow.
Yeah.
Heskey.
Thanks.
Bastian.
Hi.
Burton.
Hi.
Knower.
Maybe it's age.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, all. Moving on to the next one is for Panorama Park Building A. Another quick update basically at this point. As we stated before, the zoning board's going to hold the second public hearing on the 17th, which is next Thursday, to continue its discussion in a public forum for the residents as well to voice their concerns and for the applicant to meet back there to go over their, um, the zoning board's concerns that were stated at the first public hearing. So it's happening next week, in the meantime, wow, sorry, that's just really annoying. Silence. We did receive a memo from your landscape consultant. He basically did a site walk of both the project site and visited the homeowners association properties to kind of get a view, a viewscape of what was out there. He simply requested that he refer his, he would refrain from making comments at this time and hold those until a later date once there's more of a beef off condition out there. And depending on the timing of that, it wouldn't be uncommon for this board to make that a condition of approval that the plan is designed to his satisfaction. So unless there are concerns with that, we can keep, we can move forward with that route. But I'll just open that up to you guys.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. Of course, if actually anybody having any issues with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so in light of that, I will move to table.
One second.
Heskey.
Hi.
Bastian.
Hi.
Burton.
Hi.
Knower.
Hi.
All right.
All right, that concludes our tabled applications. Again, they were brief. Uh, we do have a number of action items for this evening. See you, Rich. And the first is a continuation of your discussion for the site plan modifications at Pennfield Square. Last time, we talked about a modification of the parking arrangement nearest to Lot 3 on the site. Doug, could you pull up the plans for that, please? And just got the recent ones. Site plan. So they provided us everything, in summary, they did provide us everything that the board asked for at the previous meeting. It includes the overlay site plan that we discussed, the modified site plan with the bump out, um, curved islands in the parking area, revised landscape plan to reflect that, the pedestrian pathway and crosswalk, as well as renderings, which we'll visit those after this. Could you show the overlay, Doug? Wants the P. It's trying, it's trying. This is that before and after picture, so in the shit, in the light shaded line weight, you kind of see what was approved originally with the parallel park, with parallel parking on that road. Can you zoom out a little bit, just so they can see that curvature, because AJ asked about that last time? And now we see, um, in the darker weighted line, the proposed layout following that conversation that took place at our last meeting. Again, it results in a shift of the green space to accommodate the parking that's proposed. And they did the modification that really is the biggest difference in this plan versus the one you saw last meeting, again, is that crosswalk area and the sidewalks that Doug's highlighting where that was parking initially, and now that's a curved island that's.
Curved island, yes.
Exactly. And they would be grass.
But they also moved two handicap spaces from one side to the other.
Uh, the other plan, thank you, Mike. Thank you. So that was part of the conversation you brought up, Jim, was to relocate those.
As long as they're in proximity to the accessible entrance to the building, it's fine.
Yep, and they have access to a handicap ramp on that new sidewalk addition that they've done there.
Okay.
So with those being said, we just want to show you the renderings that were submitted as well. I think this will help some of the questions that some of the other board members had.
Do we talk about a three-dimensional model, too?
You wanted something on a C machine?
I thought a three-dimensional model, but like built out of like sticks and stuff.
3D, 3D printers now.
Clay, claymation.
Claymation.
They're supposed to be half-size, man.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. That was a joke for the record.
On record, though.
I know. That's what I said. That's what I said.
So, uh, we had, there were five drawings that were submitted, and we can scroll through them slowly for you to tell us when you'd like to go on to the next one. But it is showing the rendering of what the proposed parking layout would be. Again, the before and after, what you reviewed on the originally approved landscape plan that offered rendering similar to this. And we also gave you handouts tonight in the color print that kind of is a sharper image than what the projector can throw up there. Again, the elements of the green space, the landscaping, um, and that pocket part, all those elements are preserved, they are shifted inwards in the pocket park area. All those, those treatments are still there. And they provide us, again, a revised landscape plan to show that, to document all this as well.
Okay. Everybody good with this?
Can you go back to the very first image? That was the second. Okay, that walkway that goes through, maybe it's just the rendering. Once you get into the parking lot, are those grassed areas?
Oh, on the median.
I assume they're grassed.
They were, they were.
They go with the same plan.
They were supposed to be gra, I believe they're grass. Grass. Asking the applicant in the audience.
The sidewalk in the middle.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I believe that was the plan.
Thank you.
All right. Any other concerns?
Now we have some bases for.
Yeah, right.
We'll be informed.
Yeah, so if anybody has any other concerns or questions, now's the time. All right. Hunter Kane and Martin, do, um, okay? We have a second?
I have a second.
All right.
Heskey.
Hi.
Bastian.
Hi.
Burton.
Hi.
Knower.
Hi.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for providing this.
You too.
You too.
Second, we have a site plan modification request for Delta Sonic on Empire Boulevard. They're just breaking ground, uh, on the construction site up there. Project that was approved by this board, I don't think, late last year, and, um... It was an 18 project that may have carried over to 19, blurry in the time of January, So what we have.
Come on, Jake, Doug.
There's a lot going on in those months, you know how it goes. What have we got on the plan there? All right, so should have brought my laser pointer.
I can point it out.
Yep, so the first things, um, that we see here, and actually, I'll start out, start out the front, Doug, if you don't mind, and go up to the top. First thing that they're doing is they're relocating the, oh, by Empire Boulevard, the vacuum, uh, motor. Originally, it was proposed, uh, at the curb cut nearest to Charlie's.
Yeah.
At the north of the site. They're actually relocating that to the opposite side now.
So the south end of that.
To the south end of that site.
So more interior to their site.
Correct, which I think helps with the noise concerns with the board. The monument sign would now be moved up to the top at that entrance, that's what 17's calling out there. Coming out of the, um, give me a minute.
Car wash.
The detail, the detail shop. They're just modifying that with, to match their four lanes, they got four stations to, um, finish the detailing on those cars that are coming out of there.
Okay.
Then, as we move on to the back of the site, uh, that was all through, we scroll down. One thing that they're adding, the circle that's smack in the middle of the plan.
Yeah.
Is a water reclamation tank that they're using for rainwater collection.
Okay.
That is a modification to the plan that they're adding. Also, there's a sidewalk.
Do they find or use that for irrigation or something, or?
That'll.
Matt is in the audience and can answer that better than me.
I'm sorry?
That's the last wash off of the car at the end.
Okay, so you'll be using rain, rainwater harvesting basically to help?
Yes, we use that as part of.
Okay.
Project, yeah.
Then, as we move from the, uh, the new vacuum, indoor vacuum building that's going to be constructed as part of this project, they've added a sidewalk connection from there to the spray booth, which eventually leads to the pay booth as well, where you're going to have at least one to two employees out in that area, so now you have a pedestrian connection getting in there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the final thing that we're going to see here is, on the original plan, Doug, it might help to go see our original plan first before I talk too much. Um, where are you actually? Planning drive action item or the?
I mean, the action item folder here.
No, yeah.
But it's.
Relocations. We'll show you the original approved plan, it's modifying the way that the cars enter the pre-wash and lead to the tunnel with the pavement that was originally approved. Overall works. So we'll just look at this first. So what you see here is a reduction of three lanes down to two, leading into the prep hut and leading into the tunnel for the cart wash, the, the cart washes. On the proposed plan, they widen that pavement to get better access to the prep hut where they have three pre-washes.
So at 15.6, 15.6, that area 10, right there?
Mm-hmm. That, which then obviously modifies everything leading back to the pay booths by adding more pavement in there. How it's been explained in their letter and how I've discussed with Matt is that most times, only two of the three spray booths are going to be used. Ideally, the middle one and the right one that you see on the screen. Traffic will be controlled by staff to merge both the pay booth, which is the interior one, and the first member one in the middle, so those are like with the prepaid monthly subscriptions, scan only. Those two lanes would merge and then go to the available spray booth. And the reason you don't see, um, solid striping there is because, again, they're going to merge, and they'll use various traffic, um, control devices.
It's sort of like getting out and off a throughway interchange in New York City.
Pretty much.
That's a tight radius that first.
It is, and that was our initial concern, that's why we, that's why when, when we first started talking with them about the site plan modification, it was showing three lanes to three lanes, but for large pickup trucks, there was just a, the turning template just missed that lane, so they're going back to this.
So they get you on a go turn file, though.
Yeah, and that's what resulted, that's what generated this plan eventually, and thank you, Doug.
I don't, I don't see an F-150 making that turn, but.
Well, that's why this was modified. This is.
This is the older one.
This is, this is the current one, actually, I'm sorry. This is showing you how a F-150 super cab eight-foot box would navigate the site on that most interior lane. So again, it just kisses.
They highly skilled.
Just kisses. Again, it's not a robot driving.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, it is the kind of thing that it's, sorry, the first time you do it, it's like, oh, that stunk. Then you go to a different lane the next time, probably.
That is really the lesson to take away from this is, yeah, that's the current one, that 916 plan.
Or you go to a competitor. I mean, those are really the.
926.
So the outer two lanes are, um, monthly pass only?
Yes. The interior lane is the pay one. And as AJ said, it's, it's.
Yeah, that's the.
This was, which one were you looking at?
This is the 926, it's got the three different, because we asked for the longer trucks, because they originally showed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
A regular cab with a short box. So we asked them to do the super cab with the long box.
Well, we tried to get the, we tried to basically plan out the largest vehicle.
So the only way that, um, other than screwing up all the, everybody else merging in there with the super cab with the long box that doesn't have the monthly.
Correct.
Subscription.
Subscription. They got to go through, they pay, they screw up everybody, and.
They work their way to the middle.
Work their way over, and, you know, you have a half a dozen annoyed customers potentially trying to get through there, and it's, right, that's, I guess, my point, it's, um, is it really our purview to say, hey, this is, you know, determining what customer service is and.
I think what they're trying to accomplish is to.
I don't think it's a safety issue either.
Yeah, that was the intent of the, that's the difficulty that they have during peak user times, is getting the vehicles off the road and onto the property.
Right. Right.
That's the safety, if you hear the crowding, so.
So I mean, I think while we all probably could agree that it's going to be a challenge, The negative effects would really be all.
Theirs.
Theirs.
And that's, and that's why we eventually got to that plan that you saw with the two lanes going to one and then controlling it to use two of the three booths, the pre-wash booths, for 99% of the time.
Yeah.
The reason why you would have to move to the interior one is if one of the ones went down for maintenance, or you had a surge in customers that you really need to open up all three, and then the staff there would coordinate, and just drivers themselves would coordinate themselves getting through there like they're accustomed to now.
Yeah.
Because it goes from three to one, or two to one, three to one.
Would you find it actually amazing with the customers, it does work, they actually go one to one, it's like this increase as well, and then even coming out here, while on the regular roads, everyone is all over the place, we find here, the customers sense it's supposed to be, they kind of do pretty good, one person goes, one person goes, and no one becomes too aggressive.
Right.
Noticed.
Yeah, I, I mean, I've noticed that, so. All right, anybody, any other things that, you cover everything.
Yes, that was the final item.
Anybody have any real issues with this?
No.
I don't.
Okay, somebody want to move to approve it?
We'll move.
So Burton, Bastian.
Heskey.
Hi.
Bastian.
Hi.
Burton.
Hi.
Knower.
Hi.
Okay.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a nice evening.
I'll be in touch, Matt, just to document all this.
Okay, perfect.
Next.
That is all you have for this work session.
Look at that. Seven minutes to spare. No, nine minutes to spare.
The clock off?
Clock's off. Well, either that clocks off or Verizon or whoever.
San Luis Arapuza.
I have eight minutes to see.
Who's counting?
Six to see, two now. All right, so we will recess for eight minutes and reconvene up on the dais for the public All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 10th meeting of the Pennfield Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to their beloved and which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and sorrow.
Okay, thank you all for coming. We have two items on our agenda this evening, and Zach, would you please read the first
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application number one, McMahon Leroux Associates, PC 822 Holt Road, Webster, New York, 14580. On behalf of Geoca Homes LLC, request under chapter 250, articles 11-11.2 and 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Pennfield for preliminary final subdivision site plan approval for a five-lot subdivision to construct five new single-family residential homes with associated site improvements on a 47.99 acre property located at 3 Apollonia Lane and 35 Apollonia Lane as part of the Bramble Ridge subdivision. Properties are now or formerly owned by Arnold DePietro and zoned RA2, application number 19P-0023, SBL number 111.03-1-34, and 126-01-1-17.998.
Good evening. Al Leroux, McMahon Leroux Associates. With me tonight, Eric Geoca, Geoca Homes, and Arnold DePietro, the owner, the present owner of the land is here also. As Zach said, this is a, this is actually a six-lot subdivision. Five of those lots are on 11.155 acres. They roughly, they're about two, a little better than two acres apiece. That, the remaining land, the 36.832 acres, is the rest of Arnold's property. All the new lots comply with zoning. The new lot, R8A, replaces the existing 3.076 acre parcel with the, the lot 2.306 acres. Perks and deep holes have been witnessed by the Moon County Health Department. We have a comment that showed, that we needed to show wetland. There is a emergent wetland, but it's all within the conservation restricted area, and it's not delineated as a wetland at this point, it's just an advisory, um, item from the DEC that it's, or the Corps of Engineers, that it's a, it's a possible wetland. It doesn't affect us, it's well away from our, our development, so it does not affect us. I got a copy of the map if you want to see it. It's up to you guys.
Thank you.
Can you see the road?
We can share.
And you can see where the lighter green is the emergent wetland?
I think so.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, there you go. That's the emergent wetland, it doesn't have a designation yet because it's emergent, and we're not developing in that area, and can't develop in that area anyway because it's a, it's in a conservation restricted area, so, and don't plan to and wouldn't.
So, uh, we have received PRC comments. I can go through them if you want to, or I can answer any questions you might have. This is a pretty simple subdivision, it's six lots on septic.
Okay, thank you. Bob, do you have any questions?
With the, the houses themselves, those would have conventional basements, there's no issues with, um, any bedrock?
There's bedrock, but we're above that with the basement floor and basement foundations, so we factored that in. We did locate the bedrock on all the deep holes for the septic system, so we know where they are. And the area, it does have rock, but it's nothing that's impacting us.
Okay, is there, um, any material that's, is all the material being redistributed on the site?
It is, yes.
Okay, so there's nothing.
No, nothing coming out.
Other, okay. And the, the septic systems, the, are conventional absorption, no race fill? Okay, thank you. I don't have anything.
Just have a question, if you clarify, I noticed a note talking about the road surface that it's never been, it's a town dedicated road.
Yeah, it's never been topped, but Arnold has a, there's been monies held by the town to do that sort of thing, so what we would like to do, obviously, we don't want to do anything until houses are built, but because of trucks coming in and concrete and that sort of thing, we just walk the road with the engineering department and see what actually needs to be done, and then, and then handle it like that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, Al, the, uh, the diameter of the cul-de-sac meets the turnaround requirements in the state fire code?
Yeah, that's a big, that's a big cul-de-sac, so I think, I don't know what the radius is, but it's, uh, I can, I do have that information, I don't know that I have it handy.
Let me just rely on staff.
Yeah, I'll, I'll confirm for you, Al, it is a town dedicated road, if we, we accept the dedication of it, it meets our requirements for the.
Okay.
For the radius.
Yeah, I don't know the radius, but I know we surveyed it and we located it, so we got the data, just don't have it. But it's a dedicated road.
Okay, any other questions? Would anyone in the audience like to comment on this application? Okay, that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Zach, if you could read the next item?
Application number two. TY Lynn International, 255 East Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14604. On behalf of Simply Crepes, request under chapter 250, articles 12-12.2 and 13-13.2 of the Code of the Town of Pennfield for final site plan and conditional use permit approval for a parking expansion, outdoor dining, and associated site improvements to service a new restaurant on the property in the existing building to be known as Simply Crepes on the 0.65 acre property located at 1229 Bay Road. The properties now are formerly owned by, okay, I can't pronounce, Chiant, Chiant, Chiana? Nope, Chiant. I just went to Italy, and I really thought I could get that one. Chiant, Chiana? Let's go with that. Property Management LLC and zoned LB. Application number 19P-0024, SBL number 093.11-1-39. Apologies to the owner, apologies.
Mr. Chairman, I will be recusing myself.
Thank you.
There's the, the existing conditions, Ariel is on the backside.
All right, good evening, I'm Randy Beeb out with TY Lynn. With me tonight is Pierre Haru, owner of Simply Crepes, and Sue Kim, the Realtor for the property. This project's located at 1229 Bay Road, this is the site of the former West. This is the site of the former Westing Company Jewelry Store that's been vacant for, I'm thinking approximately a couple of years. This parcel's .65 acres, so Pierre has an option to purchase this property if he's successful with obtaining all the town approvals and permits. Project will consist of remodeling, basically repurposing this building into a Simply Crepes restaurant. Most of the work would be interior inside the building, you know, new floor plan, kitchen, of course, exterior work, which we'll get into a little more detail about, and then some minor modifications on the exterior of the building. We did appear before the Zoning Board of Appeals on September 19th. We were granted three variances. The variances were for lot coverage, 65.5 percent buffer from a residential property of 7.9 feet, where 50 feet is required. It previously had a variance granted for 10.7 feet, and then for the reduced number of parking spaces. Per the town building codes review of the proposed floor plan, we needed 64 spaces. There is 32 spaces proposed on the site. In addition to that, we're working on getting a cross-access easement from Steinmiller Insurance, which is the property to the north. We have advertised that as 10 space, additional 10 spaces. There's actually 12 spaces on the site, so we were being a little conservative there. So that, they have an agreement sort of in place, and then obviously, we have to formalize that shared parking agreement with the town. Further, Pierre had approached the plaza owner about getting an agreement in place with parking there. He was not able to get him to commit to a shared parking agreement, but they do have an agreement in place that Pierre's employees can park over there. There's going to be some additional insurance coverage provided by Simply Crepes to allow that, you know, to cover any potential instances. So all the employees, which could be up to 10 employees, will be parking over here on the plaza side. So it frees up all the parking on site and the parking in the insurance company for the patrons themselves. So just to talk a little bit about the site itself, on the backside, as I said, I've given you the existing conditions. So really, what we're talking about on the site is all new, all new parking, all new pavement, new landscaping, new curbs, new sidewalks, so really, everything is new. Currently, there's nine parking spaces there, sort of a little radius that goes out to the back, so what we're doing is expanding the parking to the west. We're not changing the access, that's staying where it is today, so there's no work in the county right of way. We're adding a couple of spaces along the building, and then really just reconfiguring the spaces here adjacent to the insurance. Currently, they're sort of angled a little bit, so we're squaring that up. We are proposing a outdoor seating on the front part of the building with a pergola. When we did our original variance, we weren't aware that we had to have, that that setback went to that structure, or actually to the patio. We had actually taken the pergola out into the patio. We were told by the building department because of the outdoor seating, we needed a variance, so we're actually scheduled to go back to the zoning board next week for a variance for the setback to the front patio, and then there was a few other setback things added into that. We've added a dumpster enclosure to service the restaurant, so that is located behind the restaurant, so really out of the view of the public right of way. Posing that that dumpster enclosure would be a wooden, a dog-eared fence, six foot high wood enclosure, which would be consistent with the privacy, same fencing that is proposed to start sort of at the northwest property corner, go along the back and wrap, and then it'll tie right into the enclosure, so it'll screen off and buffer that whole rear parking area from the adjacent apartments to the south. We do, for landscaping, we've got a row of evergreens proposed along the back, and then really just landscaping, re-landscaping the whole front of the site, and then landscaping along the north side of the building. Proposed new site lighting. I think we have four proposed light poles, dark sky compliant, LED fixtures, and then we have about .2 acres of increased pavement, impervious area, so we are mitigating that with some infiltration areas along the north side, adjacent to the insurance property, or insurance parcel. So there's three little different sort of bio-retention areas, if you will. So we've submitted that report to the town. We had a few comments. We actually went out and did percolation tests to validate our assumptions, but that's all in the recent report. We did receive PRC comments. I can walk through those. Okay. So, yeah, we've addressed all those in the letter. We addressed all the conditions for granting site plan approval. We addressed all the conditions for granting the conditional use permit. So with that, I can answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay, thank you.
Looking at your layout here, it seems a little tight. Where would you propose for snow storage?
So we'll have, we do have some snow storage areas along the perimeter, and then, you know, ultimately, to end up, we'll have to push snow into the, into the stormwater areas.
So you think it might infringe upon some of the parking?
Not anticipating that. I mean, if that becomes an issue, that's something certainly Pierre will have to address.
Okay, alright. And the PRC comments, they made a comment about the parking when you were using the outdoor patio would have to be expanded, and I think your response was that you would rope off some of the interior tables when you were going to open up the patio.
Correct. So there's a, I have the floor plan with me, I can show you if you want to see it, but there's a, sort of an upper, you step up to it, sort of a private dining area that has actually a few more seats that are on the patio. Simply Crepes, as I failed to mention, of course, has locations in Canadega, Pittsburgh, and Raleigh, North Carolina. So Pierre really knows his business very well. You know, his experience is when the weather's nice, people want to sit outside, they don't want to be inside, he'll end up having empty seats inside. So that was our proposal, so there's this private dining area up here, so simply, he could rope that off so that we're not generating any more parking needs by using the patio.
Okay, thanks.
Can I just have a couple of questions, Randy? Will the building require, since it was a jewelry store before, will it require any new air handling equipment or? Equipment of that nature?
Yeah, I mean, there's, yeah, I mean, we're going to, with the, the equipment that's going in there, yes, there will be some ventilation improvements. I don't know all the specifics of that, but yes, they're, I mean, they're looking at it holistically.
Rooftop units being added that need to be screened, anything like that?
I don't, I don't know.
If you don't mind, just so that our millions of fans watching.
I'm Pierre Herou, owner of Simply Crepes Cafe. Just to answer that question, we are in the process right now of having contractors look at what exists, what is existing currently. There are two HVC units in the basement level right now.
Okay.
We're looking to see whether those will be sufficient to meet the needs of the additional capacity. In addition, so if not, then there's a possibility there could be a rooftop unit, or is it a possibility we could put another one in the basement, a large one in the basement to address the HVC needs. There is a ventilation system that we'll be putting in for cooking. That typically has a make-up air unit to heat cold air during the wintertime, and that potentially could be a rooftop unit. It may also be a unit that's on the ground, but right now, if there is a need for us to do something on the roof, we will definitely be screening it from the public. It's something that we don't, we don't want that look.
Yeah, that was my main point from both the street view and apartments and neighbors and so on.
Yeah.
Okay. And then regarding the parking lot lights, I know most new fixtures have the ability to dim. It's almost like a standard built-in thing, so I guess I'm assuming that you'd be open to having it dimmed down after hours, that type of thing?
Yes, well, his, hours of operations are 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. We would anticipate the lights are going to shut off. You would shut them off, or you want to leave them on, or? Personally, I would prefer to probably get them dimmed, as opposed to completely off.
Yeah, you can dim them probably to 30 percent, and you can still see, but it's not, okay. Any major modifications to the exterior of the building?
No, it's vinyl sided. All the vinyl siding is stained. There is some windows that are being replaced, and then on the front, there's just some modifications, minor modifications to sort of the surround, if you will, around the window, but really, I mean, the rough stain, it's really stained intact, so really minor changes in the big picture of things.
Okay. Any questions?
Nope.
Any other questions, Bill?
I'm also.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this application? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will call this hearing closed. Thanks, everyone, for coming. On this application?
No. Is this a public hearing or a public?
It's a, it was a public hearing for the matters that we had before us.
And for the record, Mr. Burton has refused himself to review the Simply Crepes application. So, anybody have any deal breaker issues on this?
No, I don't know if we want to make an encounter about roof screening.
Roof screening? Yeah, for if there's any?
Make sure there's a condition in there that, you know, any, very dis.
Yep, and proper screening on the dumpster?
They discussed is the fencing to match.
I forgot to mention, is wood really the material?
Yes, they're here. Oh, sorry, that's a relative question, sorry.
It was going to coordinate with the fence.
But the fence is interior, isn't it?
It's not, so if, I mean, the materials for both could be changed to a?
More robust.
Yeah.
More robust material? Like a PVC or something, or a Trax type?
Trax, obviously.
Yeah.
Or some type of composite material?
That's going to hold up.
Composite wood.
So vinyl or a composite?
Yeah.
Not a wood material?
Something more robust than wood, because wood degrades.
Okay.
Like the acetone, while you're in the audience?
Yeah, would that be something that, we'd like a little bit more robust, longer lasting fence than the wood fence?
Your trucks or vinyl?
I don't understand the, I understand the question, and I sure understand what financial commitment I'm putting up at this point. There's a difference between the cost of?
I have no idea.
16-foot Trax, or 16-foot Trax board, or wood pressure-treated board is, help me, Jim, 15 bucks, a 16-foot Trax board is 40 bucks.
Trax is expensive, I just did Trax and it's expensive.
It's probably on a?
What other materials do we have?
Three times.
More vinyl?
More vinyl. Well, we're talking about, we're just talking about the dumpster enclosure, correct? Or no?
Yeah, I think.
I was talking to all things.
You're talking to all things.
What's the linear footage?
I don't have that right off the top of my head.
We're looking at probably? Probably, right? Going around the whole backside.
You're talking a couple hundred feet.
I could live around the dumpster enclosure, because that's where it's going to, for most use, and that's where it's.
And you're saying being able to keep the wood dog-eared fence?
Yeah, something's, so it matches.
Okay.
And, but the dumpster enclosure specifically, that's where it's really going to get the use. Opening and closing.
60, well, actually, with the gates, it's 80 feet of Trax, eight-foot border, six-foot by 12-foot, you're going to cut it in half. Okay. It's going to cost you three times what wood would cost.
And then it is up to them to, to keep the fence, there would be a property maintenance agreement in place for this, so if it does go wood, they're obligated to keep it up to the standards of, you know, what is, what needs to be there. So I guess that's the flip side to that, as opposed to an alternate material, the property maintenance agreements there. Missed some of that conversation, so I'm catching back up. We were doing the math for you guys on how much, it's 210 feet.
210?
Yeah. Give or take.
Trax is expensive. Dumpster enclosure.
I wouldn't. I don't know how big people do trax fences and versus.
Plus, we have it back there, I don't even think anyone would even see it.
Well, and keep in mind, we've got, I mean, to Zach's point, he's got a property maintenance agreement, so he's got to maintain it, plus we've got the evergreens, as you, when you pull in, you're going to be looking at the evergreens and not the fence, so.
Want to pull the landscape one up?
It's typical, though, for a dumpster enclosure, we don't want to use wood. In the past, we.
Yeah. It's either made of concrete block or?
Maybe try to use something, Starbucks used a treated wood.
That was temporary?
No, Starbucks. Starbucks used a treated wood that was similar to the building that burned, look, that they were looking for, that?
I know there's a lot I knew.
It was like a kiln-treated wood.
Materials.
It was like a kiln-treated wood versus, like, stained, which?
Or, yeah.
Added to the longevity of it, but avoided the alternate materials. Again, property maintenance agreements there, but completely up to you guys.
Do you want to have, hey, explorer?
Yeah. Let's explore.
Alternatives with the final approval of the town engineer?
Sure.
Does that work?
That works.
That works.
Okay. Alright. Any other things, points that we need to bring up before? We've got a draft approval resolution?
And the EAF.
The EAF.
No one has any?
I don't.
Lighting was addressed, architecture was addressed, landscaping's been shown, we talked about the parking, across, now I will just?
Parking, dumpster.
Yeah, I just, I just want to restate for the board and the record that as part of this minimum cross-access, a formal cross-access agreement for shared parking will be required at the insurance company to provide the spaces if they counted the 10 and the 12 that they presented to the zoning board as well. It's part of the zoning board's conditions of approval as well when they came in for the parking variance. They have stated on record that they're working with the plaza owner to provide the employee parking at the plaza through their own private agreement. I just want to make sure the board is comfortable with those conditions. They'll be documented as well. Again, no changes to the curb cut. They're obviously going to be controlling the seating inside to accommodate the parking, otherwise, you know, we would be having a different conversation. They will be going back to the zoning board next week for the front patio that's proposed, just for a front setback. That was something that was, that was discussed early on, when actually, they came to a work session with this board and were, they said they were exploring that, and now it's on the plan, so they're just tying up the loose end on that one. I didn't hear anyone being objectionable to that. What else? Comfortable with, you know, the six-foot fence buffer treatment? Okay?
It's good repurpose, got an empty building around, so.
Yes, it is. I just wanted to recapture that for you guys. If there's nothing left that you have to talk about, take a vote on the EAF?
Move to approve the EAF.
I'll second.
Move to second.
Hertzke?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Knower?
Aye.
Alright.
Move to approve.
Second.
Hertzke?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Knower?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll be in touch with all the next steps in the process.
Looking forward to opening day. Okay. Welcome back, Mr. Burton. Crabwood? Crabwood?
Red.
Crabwood?
And just going back to that public hearing about the numbers, it is for five houses. One exists today. You see it on the plans there. It is of two lots today, and that is part of the re-subdivision and subdivision of plans to go from the existing two lots, basically make that one that's existing smaller and add four more lots to this, which you can see on that plan there.
Well, ultimately, it's six lots.
Ultimately, six lots will be the result of it. It'll be six at the end, but it is for five. It's concerning five lot, for five new houses.
Right.
So just wanted to clear that up for the record. Anyways...
Anybody have any... Does the town have any, you know...
Just the quick things to highlight from the PRC comments, you know, they just have to add their street trees to the plans as part of our street tree policy. A couple setback dimensions need to be added just as single-family homes. Obviously, they're larger lots, so setbacks really don't get triggered here until they start talking accessory structures.
Right.
The wetlands, there was a comment just to show them in the conservation easement area, which is, okay, we're all over the place here. It's where the signature blocks are basically on the plan. It really doesn't come into play.
Yeah, I was saying his praises and...
It's loading this really slowly.
We're getting a new one. Getting a new one. Maybe a surface, who knows? Probably not.
So verbally say what you were going to...
Verbally, basically, again, the wetlands that were discussed, show them to the right where the signature blocks are. Those can be added, plans for the town engineer's requirements. A couple swell things need to be adjusted, and we are just working with them on how they're going to use splash blocks or downspout connectors. Most likely, it's going to go to splash block. And then there was the road, which you brought up, AJ, and that is something for the town engineer and the director of public works to review that and work with the applicant and the owner on how they plan to top sections of the road and repair the existing gutters and make any other repairs or sags in the pavement or dips in the pavement that have to be addressed.
How long is they run?
Without having stations in front of me, I couldn't tell you. It's probably, what, 500, 600 feet?
And then the house that's existing, isn't there a max distance that you have to go with a...
Cul-de-sac?
No, for if there's...
Fire hydrant?
Fire hydrant.
That was something I'm sure that was addressed back when the original did the...
Yeah, because this is actually...
So too, the diameter of the turning radius is something that gets triggered by the application for permits for the houses. It's got nothing to do with whether or not it met the town standard at the time that you accepted dedication, so just a sidebar.
So can we just check on that?
Yes.
You may be one there now, I don't know.
856. 856.
Oh, yes, I think it's, I thought it was 600 feet.
It is 600.
Yeah, so that house, yeah, it was installed at a time where there may have been a different code in place. However, I know there's a hydrant to the road and there's a hydrant actually further back in the weeds.
So that would be pre-existing non-conforming. There would be nothing to trigger that distance.
Right.
So the other ones are within 600 feet.
Correct, and...
It's not the length of the road? Because they could put other homes or other... At that point, it would kick in.
Holes, lay distance.
Right, but I think to his point, if they, if they resubbed more lots down toward the cul-de-sac, like same distance of the existing house, then it would trigger them.
Yes.
Because they'd be further away.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Any other issues? All right, do you want to get this thing off the table?
Apparently, you got a couple hydrants out there.
There's two hydrants.
Oh, there's two hydrants here, right?
That's the one that worries data.
All right, never mind.
Halfway.
Probably have that data there.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. So do you want to approve the EAF?
Yes. Motion to approve EAF.
Or accept it.
Heskey?
Hi.
Bastian?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Kenauer?
Hi. And motion to approve?
I'll second.
Heskey?
Hi.
Bastian?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Kenauer?
Hi.
All right. That is approved.
Final item on your agenda this evening.
No more items. We will adjourn until the 24th. Thanks, everyone, for your participation. Have a great night.